Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, January 16th, 2025, 6:00 PM edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the chair, and I am calling this meeting to order. We have a public hearing this evening that has remained open. This is continued officially from 12/19/24. It is the Perry Place LLC requesting a special permit under Mass. General Law 40B for a housing complex at 16 Perry Place, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcel 14, and 15. And we are waiting for that applicant to arrive. So we're going to move forward with getting our other business taken care of while that person comes and prepares for us. So moving on to the other business issue. Oh, actually, let me couple a couple of things, too. If you have an electronic device in your recording, that's completely fine. You can do that. But if you could take it down to a silent mode, we'd appreciate it. And if you are recording, you just have to let us know. That's part of the agreement with the Supreme Court. That's all. So thank you for that. So we have some decisions to do. We have 21 Rochdale Street, 93 Rockland Road, 47 and 49 Rockland Road, and then some minutes. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes for 21 Rochdale Street, 93 Rockland Road, 47 and 49 Rockland Road as written and submitted?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. When you said those addresses, those were actually the decisions that we had just signed, sir.
Correct.
But for the minutes specifically. Oh, the minutes encompassed those decisions?
Correct. So we had to agree to accept, even though we just, we signed them as a means of expediting it at the beginning of the meeting because Ms. Roach is not here, we just have to still agree to.
All right, very good. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, as stated, for those property addresses, and the minutes for 12/19/24 is written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Those are into the record. Thank you. We don't have any new business, and we can't adjourn yet. So we have to wait and see what happens.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we haven't heard from the applicant, perhaps, given the gravity of this ongoing hearing, maybe we go into recess for a period of time and give them an opportunity to come. Have we not heard from the applicant at all about their absence?
They're gonna check. Maybe they have a schedule issue. But what I was gonna suggest also, though, is I think we might have some people here that would like to make some public comments. I mean, this is an open hearing. It's a continuation. We can accept these public comments ahead of time while they arrive as well, and then we can complete some of those options. I'm sorry? So not even public comments? Okay, can you just, hang on one second. So one of the things we should probably do is back up. We have a consultant here with us this evening that the town has sought out, paid for by the applicant, by the way, and just arrived. We have just learned of her onboarding today. But we have some scheduling issues that we're gonna discuss. But could I defer the microphone to you and maybe give us a little history of what's going on here and what you recommend our action would be?
Oh, thank you. I just can only ask so much. So my name is Judy Barrett. Can you all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
And actually, the applicant is not paying for my time here.
Oh, I apologize.
This is a grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, which maintains a consultant's list of a few of us who help ZBAs with comprehensive permits, kind of pretty much all over the state. I've been doing this for 25 years. So what we do is basically try to help you folks get through the permit process, because it's different, as you already know, from special permits or variances or any of the other things you typically would do. This process has kind of an accelerated timeline associated with it. There are kind of limitations, not substantial, but there are limitations on what you can ask the applicant to submit at this point versus things that can be submitted at a later date prior to receiving a building permit. So some of this is just the art of understanding what do you have to have now in order to be able to evaluate this project versus what can be deferred to the Building Department down the road. So my role here is really just to advise you to help make sure that the process you're following is consistent with standard practice and frankly, the law. Beyond that, I'm not an attorney. I'm a planner, by the way, just for the record. So I know a fair amount about this process, but there are questions sometimes that come up, which I have to say I would defer to your town council. I haven't heard any of that yet, but you know, you might hear that from me at some point. But mostly, it's about managing the process. That's what I'm here for. So you have me as long as you want me within the confines of the grant, and I'm more than happy to help. But I do this pretty much all over the state.
So can I just ask for the record to be sure, are you specifically here to communicate with the town only, or could abutters or any concerned citizens that have a vested interest in that situation contact you as well?
I take all direction from the board.
Uh-huh, okay. I just want to make sure to be clear.
Communicate with the board, obviously, town staff, but you know, I'm not gonna communicate with the applicant without the board's permission. I don't communicate with the general public. Comments that come through you, I would be happy to respond to if I'm here, if you want me to respond. But that's, it's really to help you. It's not to help abutters. It's not to help the applicant. It's to help the board.
Great. Again, I'm seeking some clarification so we all know. Do I have any questions or concerns from the members of the boards why we have the consultant here this evening? Any questions from her specifically, what we would like to address that you're comfortable speaking about right now?
I've got a reserve for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
My issue is the safety, the safety of the neighborhood. That's my biggest issue with this project. The location and the traffic is tough and the encroachment on the neighbors.
And unfortunately, I can't respond to anything about the application without the applicant here.
Sure.
Because we're not really in a hearing, but I.
You know, I think that we are reaching, it's almost 10 after. I think to be fair to the applicant and to all parties concerned, I'd like to wait until quarter after. At quarter after, I think it's been a 15-minute window period is reasonable, and then if not, we'll just continue the hearing until next month, and I'll close the meeting, because otherwise, we don't have anything else going on. So if, Mr. Loggins, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Loggins, please.
Yes, could you go to the podium, please, sir?
Mr. Chair, Danny Loggins, 39 Perry Place. I have some literature for you. If I may pass it out while you're waiting, while it's closed, you might be able to read it in the recess.
If this is regarding the application in front of you, I can't encourage you to take any evidence or testimony without the applicant here.
Okay. That's your answer. I'm not opposed to accepting it, but we have to wait until the applicant is here based on the advisement of the expert in the room, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly not opposed to accepting anything in the future when the applicant is here or if they show up tonight. But otherwise, we're gonna wait. I'm gonna take the advice.
If he does not show up tonight, may I present it, and it'll give you time to read it before the next meeting?
No. So, okay, so what I've been told is you can send it to the town, and the town can distribute it to us?
Yeah. If it's submitted to the town staff, for the board's record, they can review it and take it up at the next meeting. I'm just saying that when the applicant's not here, you don't want to be taking testimony.
Understood.
Oh, no, I have no testimony.
Well, even evidence submitted is testimony. So.
Right.
I'm just saying, don't discuss the project when the applicant's not here.
Understood. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Here we go.
Al Rafferty, Palm Street, Auburn. I have a few questions for.
So if you could direct them to me through the chair, please?
Yeah, through the chair, to this person. If I could ask her some questions. Why are you here tonight? Who requested you to be here tonight?
I was asked by Massachusetts Housing Partnership to come here at the town's request.
So the town requested you to show up?
That is my understanding. An application was submitted to MHP by town staff, asking us to come here and assist the board.
I just find it interesting, Mr. Chairman, that the zoning board was unaware that she would be here tonight, and yet the town asked her to be here tonight. So there seems to be a breakdown in communication taking place here.
So there isn't a breakdown in communication. I was actually the one that signed the application to request her to come here tonight. That was approximately a week to 10 days ago, maybe. Might have been two weeks. I'm not thinking it was even that long. And we weren't sure because the consultant time in the window period that we are in this project, they weren't sure if they could assign a consultant to us. So they had been working pretty feverishly in the background to try to get a consultant assigned to this case, and which they have. So that's why we weren't sure if she was coming this evening or not. We had heard that might have been a possibility, but as you had, she had mentioned earlier, her schedule is pretty busy on the third Thursday of the month. Apparently, a lot of towns hold those meetings at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, why did you request her assistance?
Because personally, for me, and I think on behalf of the board, I can say, I want to make sure just whatever takes place during this project, I want everything to be uncovered. I want everything to be wide open. I want everything to, and I want to have all the knowledge I possibly can to make this outcome for the town as best as it possibly can be. And I hope I speak for the board when I say that. So anytime I can get a free consultant, I'm taking it.
Mr. Chairman, you applied for her assistance. Did you notify the applicant that she would be here?
No, I didn't notify the applicant to be here because we didn't know if she was gonna be here or not.
Oh, you didn't know she would be here?
We had no idea if she would be here or not.
So you applied for her assistance, and she just showed up by surprise?
Sure.
That's an interesting way of conducting business, quite frankly. Mr. Chairman, you obviously know what you're doing. You're the chairman. You've been a chairman for a long time. I would only suggest to you that as the chairman of the board, the ZBA, you are in control of what takes place, and to have someone come in from the state and second-guess everything that you do and all the decisions you make, I don't think you should usurp your authority in that regard.
I appreciate that, and I don't think I'm doing that. I hope if the board, if they, anybody thinks I'm usurping my authority and willfully surrendering that, I would hope my board would correct me. And I would really, and actually, I would hope as a civilian that you would come up and correct me if I am, because I don't have any plans on giving away one thing if I can help it.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to second-guess your decisions. I would leave that to the rest of the board. And I certainly would hope that the board would intervene to assist him if someone from outside the town tries to usurp your authority in that regard.
Understood. I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Okay, so with that being said, that actually took us right to 1814, as a matter of fact. So it's 8:15, 6:15, excuse me, officially. And we took care of our other business. I think we've given this applicant ample enough time. Oh. Look at that. We were just getting ready to close the meeting. Okay. Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
So officially, I have already opened the meeting, just so you are aware. This is a continuation of a hearing that does not need to be addressed otherwise publicly. So you can go ahead and settle yourself in for a minute, get yourself set up. As a matter of fact, now can I vote for, can I request a five-minute recess?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a request for a five-minute recess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we're gonna go to a five-minute recess and let the applicant get himself set up. Thank you. Folks, we're gonna come out of recess now. So if you get any electronic devices, if you can just bring them down to silent mode for us, I'd appreciate it. Are we live?
Live.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to come out of recess?
Mr. Chairman, motion, make a, come out of recess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, so let's do a quick review here, just to make sure we're all up to speed. This is a continuation from 12/19/24. It's a comprehensive permit for 16 Perry Place LLC requesting under Mass. General Law 40B for a housing complex at 16 Perry Place, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcel 14, and 15. And again, to be clear, this is continued from 12/19/24. The applicant is clearly now present. And at last we spoke, we had agreed to be able to go a couple of different directions this evening. One was traffic, and the other was conditions. And the traffic studies and the engineers are still working things out in between the applicant and the state. So we really don't have any traffic updates that we can provide you with this evening. So we are gonna take that opportunity to pivot, as Vice Chairman Marin had mentioned last month, and we're gonna start addressing some of these other concerns. As the consultant, would you like to address each of these individually with us, or would you like to just spend some time observing on how our process is going?
Well, most regarding to observe, one question I have is, has the board hired any peer review consultants or reviewed these studies for you?
I'm sorry, I need, can you give her a mic or let her come up to the? That's okay.
Has the board retained any peer review consultants to assist with reviewing this application?
The town itself has a series of consultants that they have been using for years that have all been referred through to these processes, yes.
Okay. And do you know?
I want to defer to you, Adam, for this one?
Sure.
Dr. Man Adam, sorry, apologize.
Our civil engineer, Graves Engineering, has mostly completed their review, and VHB has completed the first review of the traffic.
Okay.
Waiting for the applicant's consultant to respond to that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I hope that helped. So if everybody is understanding where we're going this evening, I'm gonna go ahead and hand you to the microphone to you, sir. Do you want to bring us up to date on where you are?
Yes, James Venacasa, 16 Perry Place. So yes, we did get the review back from Graves Engineering for the stormwater management and obviously the engineering for the, for the community. The, there was only two items that were left outstanding. Both of those items, we have actually already addressed, they were typos. It was just minor, minor things. There was, I think, two on there. And then we also got a letter back from DPW. So there was, again, there was some, some more of typos, you know, things they want to change, a couple of labels that they wanted on there. We did also incorporate that into the latest revision that we just sent today. So again, they were very, very minor things. As you stated, Ali Qureshani is still working on the traffic review to get their letter back to them. So as of right now, you know, we've, we've met with FIRE. We believe that we've satisfied them. And, you know, peer review as far as engineering and stormwater, I believe that we're satisfied with everything that they've, they've asked for. We did submit the waivers, the list of waivers to you, and yeah, the operation and maintenance. So I think as far as engineering stuff goes, I think we're pretty much through that. It's really just the traffic at this point, which we're still waiting for.
Okay. Before I direct anything, Vice Chairman Aaron, do you have any questions specifically?
Not on those topics, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cussi?
I don't until I see traffic. That's.
Mr. Chikolo, sir?
Not at this moment.
Oh, okay. Ms. Bush?
Not right now.
Okay. So just to be clear, we have a list of waivers here from local bylaws and regulations that we have been asked to go through. Do you have a copy of that? Have you seen that?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Through discussion with the town, I feel as though that we are comfortable with the speaking to the first pages, the first specific page of this list. However, I think page two and three, which I'll kind of identify, I don't think is necessarily in our purview. So section requirement. So what we have here is, we have a waiver to allow garages, accessory garages for 10 vehicles. Let me read everything, and we'll address them one at a time. So the request is for a waiver from 3.9.1.1, accessory uses permitted in the residential districts and dwellings in the non-residential districts. Private garage or carport for not more than four motor vehicles, a solar system, greenhouse, tool shed, or barn, swimming pool, or tennis court, provided that such recreational facilities are used only by the residents and their guests. So that's what it currently says now. So what they're requesting, if you want to talk about this on the plan, as a matter of fact, as I address this, is what you are proposing for the 10-vehicle garages.
So.
Can you put that back up on the screen? There we go. I think it just went to sleep automatically on us. Not unlike myself, by the way, sometimes.
So on the plan, we have a 10-car garage here, excuse me. So we have three garages there.
A little bit. We've, we put those more along where, you know, like the abutters will be and everything, because obviously, it's, it's a lower roof. It's, you know, a permanent structure that will provide privacy, too. So it's, we try and kind of use those as a screening method as well. And if you drive by any of our other communities, you'd see those, you know, along roadways or, or whatever, to kind of give it a little bit more privacy to the community.
Okay. Any questions on that particular one? Any concerns on that particular one? No? Okay. So we'll go to the next one. The 5.4 dimensional regulations table, minimum of side yard of 10 feet in the residential RA zoning district, a waiver to allow a side yard of 3 feet for the accessory garages in the residential zoning A district. So I probably could have combined those two together, but if you want to just kind of touch on why you need that and where specifically on that map it will be located.
So again, it's the same garages that we were talking about. It's really those two 10s are the ones that are closer of the three. We were actually asked to push it back a little bit, too, with those fire safety, too, as far as opening them up and then getting the swing into them. So that's, that's why, you know, we put those there.
Okay. And specifically, just for the records, for the people at home and people sitting in the room here, what is that specifically top-left, large, white mass of land?
Uh, this?
Correct. The open with no development on it.
Large S. That's what the abutters.
Correct. Okay, no, that's right. I just want to make sure we all understand where that is. Okay.
And then obviously, Daiquiri is close to that first one, but then, you know, large S. We'll get those.
Would have been helpful to have the abutting properties shown on that plan, to be honest with you. But that's just my own personal.
You like their structures, you're saying?
Right. But, okay, so again, I'm just referring to the board. So they want to have a waiver to allow a side yard of 3 feet. That's something that has to be considered at some point. 6.5 standard parking dimension table, minimum length of parking stall of 18.5 feet. They are requesting a waiver to allow a parking stall length of 18 feet. So a six-inch shrinkage on the parking spaces, I don't think is too substantial.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the previous waiver, they're asking for a relief to 3 feet.
Correct.
What's our standard setback on that, if you'd remind me?
So the standard setback is a garage with no living space above it is 7 feet.
Seven. Correct. So 4.
So looking for a 4-foot relief on that.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. So we did that to the 18-foot parking stall. Then we have a 6.7.1.1 design requirement for parking facilities. Each lot may have one access driveway, which shall be at least 24 feet wide at its narrowest point, but not more than 36 feet wide at its widest point. And they are seeking a waiver to allow a driveway 54 feet in width. So again, you want to just explain the purpose of that?
Yeah. Let's see if I have something I can reach it with better. So we do have two places where we do exceed the 36. The, we have 38 here, which is, you know, the fire department. That was their requirement, that they wanted it wider. He was okay if we reduced down roughly, you know, 3 feet, but for 3 feet, it's really not gonna make, I didn't feel like it was that significant to actually do it. His concern with the section here was that if there was a fire on this building and they were, they were, you know, working this building, they want to make sure that traffic will still be able to get out. So even if their apparatus is out, they'll still be able to have a flow of traffic. So that's why we increased, that was, you know, one of their fire department's requests.
Sure.
The 54 is, is roughly, is in this area. So it's to get this swing. But when you measure from this point to this point.
Mm-hmm.
It's significantly larger. So it's not that we have a 54-foot, you know, runway coming in. It's just that in this area, they want to be able to come in, swing, and then, you know, fight the fire from here, and then, you know, obviously, come out and go that way, too. So it's just like that kind of awkward spot where it just really needed to be wider to get all those swings.
So these changes fundamentally are just from the public safety review?
Fire, yeah. Yeah, that, that section was 100% from fire, what they, what they requested in order.
Okay. Again, for the record, I just want to be clear.
Yep.
Okay, so we have the 54 feet, and then we have a 9.3.6.1 multifamily dwelling in the RA district, maximum dwelling height of 25 feet, the waiver to allow multifamily dwelling height of 45 feet. So we're looking for a 20-foot waiver in height. Just to be aware, again, we're not, I know we're not making any decisions, but I want to be clear what everybody is, what they're asking.
I appreciate you articulating the delta, Mr. Chairman.
The multifamily dwellings, so the next one, multifamily dwellings in the RA district is 9.3.6.2. The lot contains not less than 10,000 square feet of, per dwelling unit, and the residence A, residence office, local business, highway business districts, a waiver to allow 2,451 square feet per dwelling unit, based on 372,625 square feet of land area and 152 dwelling units. So can you give us a review on that one?
Dead city. That's really.
Self-explanatory.
Yeah, yeah, just a dead city.
Just wanted to be clear if you didn't want to add anything. Then we have 9363 multifamily dwellings in an RA district. Only one multifamily dwelling structure per lot is allowed. The waiver to allow three multifamily dwellings units in that lot. So keep that in mind. And then we have 9.3.6.4, the multifamily dwellings in the RA district. No single dwelling structure contains more than 12 apartment units or more than eight attached houses in the RA and RB districts. Waiver to allow 64 apartment units in a single dwelling structure in the RA district. So again, reviewing these briefly before the meeting, I recognize that these are issues that the zoning board would customarily deal with, and I believe that these are under our purview for review and consideration. Moving forward, what they are requesting specifically right now is for stormwater management bylaw. And rather than read the entire seven, say, the section and responsibility, I just want to let everybody know what they're looking for. And the waiver to allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to have the authority to administer, implement, and enforce this bylaw, as the project will be permitted under Mass. General Law, Section 40B, 760 CMR 56.00. So what they are asking for is for stormwater management to be waived and to be brought under the authority of the zoning board. They want a waiver to allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to have authority to administer the stormwater management bylaw, a waiver to allow disturbance within 50 feet of vegetated wetland, a waiver is requested from a connection and entrance fee for the water district, and sewer regulation waiver is requested from the fee requirement. So as one of the abutters had mentioned, or one of the concerned citizens had mentioned earlier, that he was concerned about the, myself as a chairman, surrendering or usurping the authority of the board members, or myself, the board, excuse me. And I share that concern. And I also want to say that I don't think stormwater management regulations regarding stormwater management, excuse me, wetlands and water district are really not under our purview. And I'm gonna tell you why. So stormwater management, we have a very good, responsible people that authorized those plans. I think they, there's no reason to remove that authority. I also don't think the Zoning Board of Appeals has the authority to vote on itself, granting it's an authority over another body. I just don't, I think that would have to come from a third party, such as a selectman.
Do you like some input?
I'm sorry?
Would you like some input on that?
I would absolutely love some input on that. Yes, please.
So under Chapter 40B, all the local approvals that would normally be administered by whatever boards in town come to this board. So that's why the applicant is requesting a waiver under the stormwater bylaw or your local wetlands bylaw, because by law, it belongs here. So my advice to you is, if you haven't already done so, would be to seek input from those other boards that normally would have jurisdiction, because ultimately, it is this board that will decide whether to grant those waivers. The applicant is not required to go before the Conservation Commission, except under the State Wetlands Act. So it is in your hands, unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be. All those local approvals come to this board.
Correct. So what I was expressing through, I was gonna read through the rest of the list and just explain that if they wanted to waive their rights, each board should be addressed and should be notified first before it comes back to us. That was, as I was leading up to all that. So I agree, and thank you, and I'm glad I was making the right course of decisions as we were heading in that direction. So again, we had the waiver to allow disturbance 50 feet in the wetlands, a waiver requested from the connection entrance fee. Again, the water department, their commission is gonna have to vote on that. They're an independent body. They are quasi-structured government organization that is basically a semi-private. So they'll have to vote on that to agree to allow that, even though, as the consultant is saying, we will have the authority ultimately. They're still gonna have to go through that process. And again, with the sewer department, I think also, they want to request a waiver of fees. I think those two issues need to be addressed by the sewer department, and they have to grant the authority if they so choose. So if the board does not disagree with that, or there are other concerns, do you have any input on those? I suppose you probably take a break and ask that.
Is that to me, Mr. Chairman?
It is, yes. I'm deferring to you to give me a break so I don't have to.
Fair enough. I think you've done a great job so far. In the latter part of what you've covered, I would agree. Consultation with those other boards is imperative. As far as the waivers for the first section of it, that are, let's just say, more in our core wheelhouse, I've got considerable concerns over several of those. And so we can take it into discussion tonight or defer it. We just want to do a deeper dive. But I would agree, the latter. Um, but I would agree, the latter, the latter waivers, um, we certainly need consultation from the other boards, um, if it were to come back. Uh, but in, in totality, I, I have considerable concerns about what they're asking for in totality. Several of them are striking. That um, that we would grant such waivers. So, so I, I think that um, you know, under consideration, um, they're asking for a lot here.
Agreed. Mr. Cusi?
Uh, I agree with Mike a hundred percent uh, on both issues. Uh, I think definitely go to the other. Departments, water and sewer and uh, but the beginning part, um, these waivers are a lot and um, I have concerns.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
I share the same concerns as uh, Mr. Merron. Um. Definitely want further input from. Excuse me, our other boards.
Ms. Bush?
I agree. I have nothing else to add, but I agree that we do need some um, I guess discussion on the waivers requested and. Obviously input from the other boards. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so it appears to me though, I think that we understand that they're. At least we're interpreting those issues correctly. So um. I think the best course of action would be able to absorb this for a month, let the board. Review each one of these as the concerns are, and then the following month, hopefully, or the next meeting. We should be able to notify these individual departments and possibly get feedback for them, from them by then. Depending on what their, I don't really know what their meeting schedule is like. I'm not sure how often water commissioners meet. I don't really know how that works, but. They might meet monthly, they might meet weekly, I don't know. Do we have anything else from the town side that we need to cover this evening, you think? Did we miss anything?
If you're done, if you don't want to poll on the waivers, you can discuss other mitigation efforts that maybe the board would like to see on the scope of the whole.
Yeah. Could you repeat yourself, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the chair. Um, if you also with the waivers, I would suggest you discuss other mitigation efforts of the, of the projects such as landscaping, fencing, stuff that would. Help mitigate the effects on the neighbors if this were to be approved.
Okay. Uh, advice from the town is to move forward and discuss any of the landscaping, fencing barriers. You want to take that under advisement and discuss it this evening?
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Chairman, I, I, I think it's a thoughtful comment. Um, I don't know how you mitigate um. Another twenty feet above, you know, our projected by, our, our scripted bylaw. Um. I don't, I don't think anyone would, um, would think that a compromise um, to mitigate um, the sightliness. Is a fifty foot fence versus a fifteen foot fence. Um. I, I, I'm, you know, I mean, in short, I, I think that um, that they're asking for a lot. We could talk about specifics, but they're, they're asking for. Um, some setback relief of, you know, four foot, four feet here and three foot here. That's, that's not the issue. The issue is they want to double the size of the height of anything allowed in that area. For safety considerations and the swing around for safety trucks, I get it. Um, but um, but as far as just size and height. And, and um, depth and breadth of how many units in that space, um, they're asking for too much, quite frankly. So um. I don't, I don't know that it would, I don't know that it would do us any good to, to look into mitigation on um, the aesthetics for the neighborhood right now. That's just my gut.
Understood. Mr. Cusi?
Yeah, I agree. I um. To me, it's pretty obvious that the project's too large for the, for the lot. Um. If you need to ask for all these waivers to, to try to make it work. Um, so I agree with Mr. Merron on uh. There's no need to go forward with the uh, evergreens or fences and.
Until we resolve these issues?
Until we resolve these issues.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
I feel the same way that to discuss. The, the fences and so forth, I might be putting the horse before the cart.
You agree with Bush?
I agree.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I'd like to get everybody's input. So, okay, if that's the case, then I'm going to defer to the consultant, ma'am, if you've heard that. Um, do you have any input on the side of those decisions that were just made?
Not substance?
Sure, I understand, yep.
I, I mean, I think it would be fine to make sure that the other boards or departments whose regulations are being sought to be waived. That they, if they have the application, I think it's fine to ask them for comment. You know, that's appropriate. The, the challenge you have is that under chapter forty B, there's this balancing test of, and you probably have all heard this, so. You can tell me to be quiet if you already know this, but there's this balancing test between the, the, um, the local concerns that are protected by your local regulations. And the regional need for affordable housing. So when your town is below that ten percent threshold under chapter forty B. The weight of the law shifts on the side of the regional housing need. So I think you're going to want to think carefully about, you know, what, what's. What is just not, what's a, what's a deal breaker, you know, in terms of waivers? And what things are probably waiverable from your point of view, uh, you know, with whatever input you get, but. You know, you just have to, I think, understand kind of the premise of the law is that there's a housing need that needs to be met. And that if local regulations are in the way of addressing those needs, it falls to your board, like it or not, to have to balance. Those local concerns against housing need. And, you know, the law's on the side of housing need, so just keep that in mind.
Sure, understood.
We can, if, you know, if it's helpful to the board, because I don't know when you last had a comprehensive permit come in here. I have no idea. Um, but if you want to schedule on some other night a training, because I don't know what, what information the board has even had on how chapter forty B works. But if you want to do a training some night, I'm happy to do that for you.
We would welcome a training. In fact, there was a meeting that was discussed, that very topic was discussed in um, that included Ms. Roach uh, and myself. Um, and at first I thought that we would not have the opportunity and I declined and Ms. Roach. Very wisely corrected me and said we should take um, advantage of any training we should get. So I agree with that. And if it is possible, uh, we would have to arrange that through the town again, because technically by law, only two of us can meet.
I know.
You know, we don't want to open any violations of meeting laws, so we want to make sure that was done correctly. And uh, yeah, we would welcome any kind of training.
So that would just be a posted meeting. That's not a hearing. That's just a posted meeting.
Correct.
Um, so, I mean, I, I can give you some dates that I could do that. I'm happy to do it. I think it will be helpful to all of you. It's not that you're going to want to hear what I have to say, but you at least ought to know kind of how the law works.
Absolutely.
And where your wiggle rum is, so to speak. So.
So I see our job here as being a representative of the community. We're all volunteers here. We all live in this community. We all have the same and share those concerns. We recognize all those things you mentioned, but we have to also do the best we can for our communities volunteers. If I had, if, if I was sitting at home, knowing that somebody was representing me as a taxpayer and a homeowner in this town. I would want them to do the absolute best they could. So I want the board to know that I, I personally believe that, and I know that every person here believes that. Um, to do the absolute best we can for the whole overall situation. That's really what I'm seeking here. So. Um, with that being said, do you have anything else you want to add? Because I have some people that want to comment and I'd like to open up the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, just to be taking a conservative approach, I, I know your intention is to open up for public comment. Um, we've had our, our hearing open for several weeks now. Um, if, if I could just gently remind. Um, that anyone that wants to provide public comment, if we're, we're just not going into a, a repetitive mode.
Right.
So if you have a new topic to bring up, um, we are on record, you're on record with what you've said in the past and we've listened to it. Um, and so if there are new things to share this evening, uh, then I would, I would welcome you to do that. Uh, but um, just based on the level of importance and frustration that a forty B project presents the town. I would ask you that, that if you do intend to speak tonight, uh, that they are new comments, that they are new issues.
Well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, um, I'll open up a public comment. Yes, sir.
Paul Daiquiri, thirty two Perry Place, um, abutted right to this. I just want to bring up the private road again. I know, like you said, it, it's an ongoing issue with it, you know, and I hate to bring it up again, but that's cutting right through our properties. You, we, we own halfway up the road. One of the, I have a right, I cross somebody else's property to get to my house. So that's another issue. So all the way up that road, I understand, we got a, we got a right for an easement to go through our property. What gives them the right to develop the whole road and take over our properties? It's a private road. And like we said before, after he gets done with this project, he goes bye-bye, collects his money and see you later. We still have to maintain the road because it's a private road. And like I said before, like a broken record, um. Me and another neighbor are maintaining this road as with it, as it is now. So, and again, the private sore main going down. Now all of a sudden we can go around it. When we were told, there's only one main coming down that road. So there is, there's so many issues with this project, you know, and this is the first I heard about moving it closer to my property now, you know?
This is, again, this is what the purpose of these meetings were.
Yeah.
So when we got these list of requests, that's why we're going over them, each and every one of them.
I understand.
So we had just reached the stage on, you know, in the, in the motion, so, so to speak. Um, and again, we're not making any decisions on any of these this evening.
Oh, I know. I'm just bringing these up so it's something to think about also, you know? Like I said, it's a private road. You know, I know the forty B, you know, takes over, but where's that property, you know? So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Dean Hazzis, eleven Pearl Street.
I'm sorry, could you say your name quick again?
Dean Hazzis, eleven Pearl Street.
Thank you.
Um, couple of, couple of things. I, I feel like it was a little bit insulting for someone to tell you you need training in forty B housing. And the rules and the laws. I think we're not against forty B housing. It's just, have you been to the location? If you can ask the consultant if she's been there.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, this, I, I guess through the chair, they're asking if you have been to this particular location or if you know anybody that's reviewed.
Consultation. I am not a peer review consultant.
Right, thank you. So no, she didn't.
So no, she has.
A, a, a site.
You guys all have been, I think mostly. Um, it's so congested and tight now. I can't imagine what it would be like with. I don't know, six hundred, a thousand cars and how many people. Um, there's definitely a safety issue. Uh, but my concern is, yeah, do they have a right to, to the private road to build? The other thing was the traffic study. I know we're waiting on it. We've been waiting on it for four years. And when he was talking about, oh, it's, it's coming, it's coming, whatever, and then typos? This is just deceptive to me. I mean, I just can't trust these people. I think the state is huge. You can put. Uh, forty B housing anywhere. Why pack it into the tiny corner against the highway in Auburn? It doesn't make any sense. Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
You?
Daniel Largess, thirty nine Perry Place. Um, it, some of those waivers he's asking for, um, three feet from my property line. No fencing, uh, when Selectman Corrine, and I, I could be wrong, but I believe it was Selectman Corrine. Was trying to negotiate this. They agreed on ten feet with twelve foot abavoidees and a fence in between. Because that's a liability for me. If somebody goes over there and starts messing with my cows. Just so this gentleman can make five point eight million dollars a year. And that's, figure is according to him. Again, I, I honestly, I know what the consultant said, but as far as stormwater. Uh, I, I honestly, right in front of the state and the gentleman there to your right, um, Mr. Cusi. Um, he, he, he was there, um, when the walk along was, the state was there, Mr. Busby. And uh, he said he was going to push the snow into the swamp. And Mr. Busby was like, whoa, no, 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 that ain't going to happen. Uh, when they originally applied for the, the brain rehab house. The state turned around, the conservation turned around and said, no, you need a retention pond. You're not going to jump, dump. Your salt, your sand and everything into the wetland. Um, is there any way we can bring this back up?
I'm sure.
Please, touch the screen?
Make it happen again.
Um, I touched. Okay, just, I, I'll point something out here at the corner of uh, Mr. Daiquiri's property. Okay, right here at this corner, there's not twenty five feet to the wetland. So according to what he's showing you, is he's filling in the wetland. And putting a wall there, retaining a wall there. Mr. Chair, with no disrespect in the board, I think that's something conservation needs to, they've already shot him down. I mean, this developer was shut down in the town of Berlin because he decided he was going to put a retaining pond in the wrong spot. And in the meeting in Berlin, the Z B A told him, you're not allowed to change a light bulb until you fix this. He comes in, he tells you one story and then he does what he wants. And these are on record. You can contact the, the Z B A in Berlin. But again, as Mr. Daiquiri said, I think we're putting the wagon before the horse, um, as far as some of these things go. So I, I have a, a letter here from uh, the law firm of Tillman Davis and Duffy. Also written with attorney Daniel Hill. And they sent me this and they asked me to distribute it to you for your reading. And this was a same scenario as an issue in Southborough. And they asked me to distribute this to you. And our attorney, um, Henry Lane could not make it this evening. He had a previous engagement. So in his findings, the back lot, which would be back here. From here up, which used to be.
That's your land you're talking about, the back lot, quarter?
No, that's, that's, there's two different lots. There's this one here.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
Perry Place.
Mm-hmm. I just want to make sure we all knew.
This lot here is still considered Walshav. When two ninety was split with this. There was never a right of way given. So when the, the deeds for our easements. It's one house, two house, three house, four houses that are on that easement and on the deed. Okay? That there, the back lot, has no right to Perry Place because of the size of the road. And the easement on the thing. And we, we will bring in the, the deeds for that. Um, but I would like to distribute this paperwork to you.
Absolutely.
If, if I may approach the board.
Yes, you may, sir. Thank you. Again, I welcome any and all information. Thank you. So just for the record, Timon Davis and Duffy, um, one Boston Place Suite twenty six hundred, Boston, Mass. Oh, two, one, oh, eight, six, one, seven, nine, three, three, ninety four, ninety. This letter is dated November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
Appreciate it.
And uh, total of twenty seven pages, all sequentially numbered. Um, and it all is in reference to, uh, well, I can't say it's all, but it appears to be in reference. To uh, what Mr. Largess is asserting here. So do you want to continue with that? Go ahead.
I, I think we need to get the road figured out before we get too far into this. You know, he, he's stepping on our rights and again, you know, the buildings. I'm going to look out my front window and see a sixty six foot building out my living room. And now he wants to move it closer to my property line without putting the abavoidees and the fence in like he agreed to. When they're originally.
Well, that's what we actually, if you recall, just a little while ago, the town asked if we wanted to discuss that this evening and the board decided not to because they felt it was putting the cart before the horse. So if these other issues that have all been brought up, um, this evening, to include their request for waivers and your concerns with the right of way and easements. Um, then we would move on to the fencing and the, the screening. I agree with you, but I'm just letting you know that is on the agenda and it will not be overlooked.
Okay, okay. And, and the other is the easement is for the landowner.
Say that again?
The easement for the road.
Mm-hmm.
Is for the landowner.
The landowner meaning that the easement was granted to your property?
My property, Mr. Daiquiri's. It's for the landowner. It's not for an owner. To say, hey, I'm going to drop in a hundred fifty eight units and shove three hundred cars driving down your property. That is the burden of the easement for the residents. Um, the road that actually goes in front of number eleven, or eleventh driveway. Was six inches below, bless you, six inches below than where it is now. And the reason it has grown over the years also on number four Perry Place. Um, is every time a pothole comes in. It just gets fill on top. time a pothole comes in, it just gets filled on top of it. Not saying that it's a bad thing that the, so the, the road is washing off into the adjoining properties. Now, if this gentleman raises the road, it's going to flood right into the condos. It's going to flood right into number 11 Pearl Street. It's going to back up. And these are things, this is, I think the, the private road, and again, our attorney will be here at the next meeting to discuss that, that back lot. It's, it's crazy. And the magnitude of the size of the units, there are some really, really beautiful units that the city of Worcester did on James Street. Beautiful, but, correct? And, and those are two-story units, and those are beautiful. We have some units on Pheasant Court over by Arm and Youth. Those are nice country-style two-story units. Yeah, I'm sorry, he's not going to make $5.8 million a year on that. But he's providing 40B housing. So whether it's four stories or it's two stories, he's providing, if the 40B housing means so much to this gentleman, then he's going to abide by our bylaws, and he's going to bring it down to two stories, and he's going to make sure it's away from the property lines. You know, it's, do we need all the extra garages to, to shove it into our property? You know, if they, I might as well just rent them out my cow pasture and let the cows mow his lawn. You know, hey, cut the fence, let them mow your lawn and your shrubs.
Right.
You know, I, he rents to somebody with a little kid, and the little kid comes over there and touches the barbed wire, or gets hooked on the barbed wire, or touches the electric fence, it's going to be hell today, and it's going to be on me. And then it sounds like I'm going to have to sue his ass.
So we definitely appreciate all the concerns, but I just have to go on record here and tell everybody this right out in public. If you consider these things legal issues that would warrant a court action to prevent this project from moving forward, that would have to be on you and the abutters. There is no way that I get any indication that the town would be interested in pursuing this legally. Hold on, I got to finish, because the town is not in a position to do that. So for this to actually stop this project would have to go to Superior Court under a your fruition in front of a judge. This, by the time we got any kind of action on this document approved through town council to the town meeting, because we have represented the former government, this project will already be built and long gone.
So, so Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with the state housing last week, Mr. Busby.
Okay.
And we talked for a while, and he told us that they passed this because somebody, and he wouldn't tell me who, he said somebody from the town told him that the private street was all taken care of through the neighbors. And I said, no, it's not. He says, well, we probably wouldn't have passed it then. And I said, okay, well, that's nice to know. I says, can you contact the ZBA meeting? And he says, well, it's in their hands now. We can't backpedal. And I says, well, if that was done on the false pretenses, then why is that null and void?
So I can't say that it's under false pretenses. Whatever took place that, that happened, I don't really know anything about that. I don't even know if I could actually probably look into it, because if, if it was just word of mouth on a phone call, you know, and there's no documentation, I don't really know what we could do about that. I do recognize that this is a legal issue. I do recognize that as, to me, a legitimate legal issue. But again, I don't, I can tell you now that I can't authorize the position of a lawsuit to stop this, and I know the town will not support a lawsuit to stop this. Unless it goes to town meeting and gets voted on through the regular legal processes to authorize something like this, we can do our best by only negotiating with the applicant for the best outcome possible for the town, based on the regulations we have in front of us.
Mr. Chair, it's, it should be his proof of burning.
I would agree with you.
It should be his proof.
I'm not a legislature. I didn't write the 40B legislation. And I understand your emotions with this. I recognize the value of this land personally to you in terms of an investment, but also in terms of how many generations your family's been on this land. And I recognize that if I was a butter, I would be probably twice as upset as you are, to be honest with you. But again, I have to look at the purview of what we are allowed to see here as a board within these regulations and the rules and laws, and we can't put ourselves open for liability or the town. And 40B basically was written in such a manner that it was intended to do what it's going to do whether we like it or not.
It was written back in the 60s, and all it is now is a weaponization of builders to shove it up the towns you know what.
I can't figure out the purposes, and I can't.
And that's what it is.
That is on the state level, but I have read into the history of 40B myself, and it does have somewhat of a dubious history. But regardless, it's, it's law, and none of our legislators have done anything to change it over the last 50 years, which indicates to me they have no intention of changing it in the future anytime soon. So unless somebody like yourself goes in front of a judge and says, we don't want this project, I'm going to butter, I am somebody who is going to be personally and financially aggrieved by this, then the judge would say, yes, I agree and stop it. But the town is not going to do that. And you can see what's going on with other issues with like the MBTA communities law. Towns have stopped and sued and successfully won that, and it went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court said, mm-mm, just because they wrote the regulations poorly doesn't mean it doesn't exist, and they allowed it.
No, I, I understand that, Mr. Chair, sir.
I just want to point out to you.
No, I, I do, but some of the, some of the waivers he's asking for are ridiculous. Again, it, if he's so down-to-earth on the 40B and wants it, let him take a ride over to James Street and look at those beautiful buildings over there.
Understood. And again, I think my, to, to point of my, my colleagues here, we've, we've given a lot of extra time for your concerns, and I recognize that. And we have one more person like to come up, but we have to wrap this up because you've addressed your concerns, you've given us the things, I've, I think I hopefully have provided you with as much insight from the town that I can give as a volunteer. And I, you know, I, I really do wish you the best. I want to do the best for what's happening for you, but if you want this to stop, it's going to have to be under your group's, or I don't want to call you group, but the, the abutters fruition here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Just to be fair, I want to be open and honest with this whole entire process, you know?
Right, right. But I think it should be under his burden to prove that he can do it, not our burden to say no.
If you get me elected, I would be, the first thing to do is I'll change that law. But until that happens, I have no control.
The governor's up soon. The governor is up soon.
So with that being said, is there anybody else that has?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board.
Concerns to go on, and then I'll be happy to, because honestly, if we're not making any headway, then we're going to share some concerns, and then we're going to, we're going to move on to next month.
Dean Hazzis, 11 Pearl Street. I had a question. If you defend the bylaws and say no, you can do that at this level, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I was a little confused when you were saying this is going on no matter what.
Correct.
You were talking about.
I can defend the bylaw. Here's what you have to understand, right? So we can defend these bylaws, and we can say during a negotiation process, what we are in right now, that we agree or disagree with them, but the state still allows them to go through. What they do is what they call it a hostile 40B, right? And I don't like the term of it, quite frankly, but that's what it's referred to as. So right now, we're in a negotiation process. We have a six-month window to do that. We started in November, right, October or November, but we have until about April. If the applicant chooses to extend that through the, an earnest negotiation process, they can do that. Other than that, at the six-month window period, they can close that window and just go strictly to the state and deal with them only.
Okay.
So unfortunately, as much people have said publicly that we can, we can stop this project, we can't. We can, we can vote to disagree with the project publicly.
Does a traffic study?
Does not stop the project.
Can a traffic, a negative traffic study kill this?
Safety is one of the only real concerns that could possibly even have, alter the outcome of this.
Okay, thank you very much.
So if that applies.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then I got to wrap this up. One more comment, one more comment, and then we're done.
Paul Dockery, 32 Perry Place. So you're saying safety could, the only thing that could prevent this? What about our properties?
Can I just go to the consultant on that? So am I correct in saying what I've said so far, ma'am?
Public health, public safety, and environmental impact are the main factors that are in your purview. There are some others, but frankly, they don't carry the same weight as those. Environmental impact, public health, public safety.
So if you want to take note of those three things and try to address those.
So the state can come and take our property then, and they could take over.
Oh, so you're going way beyond what this gentleman was here to talk about. I'm not talking about any kind of fake property. That would have to be before a land judge. That's, this is, that's way beyond our scope here.
So there's no answer.
But I don't, I don't disagree with your concern. I recognize that as well. But it's certainly way beyond.
Yeah, because they're going to be taking our property going down that road. Half and half, there you go. All right, thanks.
Just let, I'm going to let this gentleman speak, and then I'll let you address these
Al Rafiti, Paul Street. I, I realize you want to move on, so I'm going to keep my comment very short. The so-called person that has come from the state to advise you, you have to recognize that she mentioned that she deals with, with Housing Alliance. So she is here, she is pro 40B. So take that into consideration. Everyone take into consideration, she's here to advise, but she has a vested interest. She wants to put housing everywhere.
Go ahead, sir. Thank you for the comments.
I'll make it quick. I guess the one thing that I'd just like to clarify, that, that the right of way, the width of that is 40 feet, right? So we're, we're staying within that. I'm not looking to take anybody's property. I'm not looking to fill anybody's property. Everything that we're going to be doing is going to be within that right of way, and we are improving the roadway from what it is today. We're not, we're not putting the units on a road that in its current condition. We are improving it, but we are not going to add any, you know, take anybody's property. We're not filling in front of anybody's property. The spot that we're going to be filling is where there's wetlands on both sides. Obviously, Graves Engineering has looked at it. They're not allowing us to, to create any issues for abutters or anybody, and we're not looking to either, right? Like, we are going to be there. I'm not trying to fill in front of somebody's house to, to, to cause a problem. And the engineers, our engineers will do that. The town engineers will verify that we are not doing that. And then the town will be there as we're doing the roadway and doing the work to make sure that we're also not doing that. So I just, just want to make it clear that we're not intending to take anybody's property. We're, we're staying within that, that, that right of way. That's it.
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
I'm going to say this completely, I hope my board doesn't admonish me for this, but whatever. Is there any discussion between you and the abutters about purchasing the, the rights to the road?
No, but we're, we're definitely open to that. We're open to that. We're open to.
I mean, it seems to me that it would be, if you want to sell your road, we'll give you a fair market price for it, and you would resolve the issue, and then maybe they feel some financial compensation might make it a little bit more palatable. And I don't know if that's the right answer or not. I'm just saying, it seems to me that some open discussion might be generally better than, than, you know, what we have right now.
Yeah. And, you know, to the abutters, I have no issue if you want to, you know, talk or discuss it. I'll, I'm open to a discussion, absolutely.
And I hope, I apologize to the board if I suggested that out online.
Oh, I think that's.
It just seems to me that, I mean, if, if they want that piece of land, it seems to me that they have a process of going, if they want to purchase, if they can buy it, right? And again, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there to try to resolve issues. This is just a simple thought process.
No, I think it was a great comment, and I'm, we're, we're open to it, to, to respond to your.
Okay, that's all. Last call, Mr. Lagers, and then I'm going to wrap this meeting up. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't know where we're going to get 40 feet. That's going to be a lot of wetlands. You're talking about Mr. Downer's front lawn at number 29. You're talking about the condos, who is not going to give up their, their property. Mr. Boliver is not going to give up his property, and, and the gentleman from number 11 is not going to give up his property.
Fair enough. I just thought it out there.
I mean, I don't know where he's, it's, 40 feet goes to a public road, not a private road. It's not, it's, you know, it's like your next-door neighbor saying, hey, I got 40 feet, I'm going to blow your front lawn right out, and I'm paving it and putting sidewalks in right up to your front steps.
Understood.
Your kids are going to walk out of your house, and you're going to have 2,000 cars a day zooming right five feet from your front door. I, you know, it's, it's a private road. I don't know how he's going to get 40 feet. He's talking about filling in the wetlands just now. I, I, I can't stress enough, Mr. Chair, I really think conservation needs to be a joint meeting. They did turn him down when the brain rehab. They turned around and, especially when he said they were going to push everything right into the wetland, all the snow, and everything was going to drain right into the wetland. And Mr. Busby was like, yeah, no, not happening, absolutely not. So to say we're going to fill in the wetland, and then you're going to end up.
But here's the thing you have to understand, too. I don't know who Mr. Busby is. I've never met this gentleman.
Mr. Busby is from the state, sir.
Understood, but.
You have his reports and everything in your packet.
But I, without this gentleman here giving that testimony firsthand himself, I can't accept it from you that's hearsay. It doesn't really apply to us.
Mr. Cussy was there when he, when he said it, and he was going to push everything right into the wetland.
Understood, but I mean, what I'm saying is now, if there's any questions or concerns that you brought up recently with him, then he says now all of a sudden, well, we wouldn't have approved that had we known it. Again, without his documenting those concerns and specifically stating them, I can't just take that at face value. You know, if he writes a letter and said, if I knew this beforehand, I wouldn't have agreed to this project, then it becomes a state-level issue, and it goes back to the 40B folks that have to go and say, okay, well, maybe that was wrong. But again, that's not the purview of this board. I wish it was. I really do. It's just not.